Brian Cassianas Absinthe, Donna Capola.
Present.
President, Mr. Ford.
President.
Miss Gailey.
Present.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Mr. Sadowite.
Present.
And Mayor McGee.
Present.
And observing is Superintendent Tutwiler.
Present.
Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero.
Present.
Kevin McKeel.
Present.
And Sunny Myhouse.
Present.
Mary Jewels.
Present.
We got Dorothy Pressler.
Present.
And Robin.
She's on the call. I know she's.
She's here. And Dawn Hassi.
And I see Dawn is here and we're ready to go.
Okay, good.
Okay, great. Have you let everyone in?
Six oh two.
Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, this is me, Tom McGee, and I'd like to thank you for joining us for the 13th Special Meeting of the Linn School Committee Thursday, December 3, 2020. This open meeting of the Linn School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, is on the city website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Linn School Department is convening by telephone conference via video conference. The Zoom platform is posted on the city's website and on the Linn Public Schools' website. Additionally, this meeting can be viewed on the local cable channels, Cable 3 for Comcast, Cable Channel 3 for Comcast, and Channel 37 for Verizon. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and you need to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Ground rules, before we get to the first agenda item, and before we officially start the meeting, I want to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business, and ensure that we have accurate meeting minutes. As the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will get on the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. I ask you to hold until your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves as you're speaking. Finally, each vote that will be taken in tonight's meeting will be conducted by a roll call. With that, we're ready to start the meeting, and I'd ask, and I know Dawn Hassi, there is a flag in the meeting room that's on the screen, I'd ask everyone to stand and join me in a salute to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There's two orders of business tonight. The first is the selection of standards and indicators for the superintendent's evaluation. And I know Dorothy Pressler is here.
Yes, I am.
And I would ask you to welcome Dorothy, and I'd ask you to get us started on tonight's discussion.
All right. Okay, so given the state that we're in right now, and have been in since last March, there are quite a number of school committees who are wondering sort of how do we handle superintendent evaluation under the current circumstances. They had a set of goals that were intended to go through the end of last school year, which obviously got quite disrupted once we got to March. So there's been a lot of questions of what do we do with evaluation now? And in advising school committees and in thinking about what will work for the school committee to ensure that progress moves forward in the district and that you're also being fair to the superintendent, what we have recommended is that goals stay in place, and there's a couple reasons for that. Generally, when you move from year to year on the goals, they don't change very much anyway. You're making progress, you know, you have a district plan which probably looks out several years, and the superintendent is consistently working on making progress towards those goals. So the work may change a little bit, the focus of the goal may change a little bit, but basically the goals don't change drastically from year to year. So to consider that you're moving forward with the goals that you had last year into this year is a perfectly reasonable way to look at the goals. The other rationale is it's really not fair to the superintendent to say at evaluation time, let's decide what we're evaluating you on, and not give the superintendent that time to work on those goals. The other aspect of that is looking at the standards and indicators and elements. In having some discussion around that, generally, we recommend that school committees pick the standards, the indicators that they're looking at from the standards at the time they set the goals. One of the aspects of the superintendent evaluation, the model that we're using now, is we really want you to consider it to be a goal-driven model, because setting those goals is what really is going to move Linn forward. The rubric, the standards and indicators are the same for superintendents throughout the state, but what is going to move Linn forward is really the goals that you're setting for the superintendent, and the goals that you have, and the goals that are tied, the superintendent goals that are tied to your district goals. So ideally, you're picking the standards and indicators that relate most closely to the goals, and actually doing that at the time that you set the goals. My understanding is that you're a little bit off-kilter in that right now, but what really would make sense in terms of a fair evaluation of the superintendent and an evaluation that allows those two to stay tied together is to maintain the same standards and indicators that you've already, if you're maintaining the goals, maintain the same standards and indicators that you have for those goals. I have more information about thinking about looking forward, but maybe it's best to wait on thinking about looking forward to the next cycle until after we've had some more discussion on the current cycle. So Mayor McGee, maybe I'll turn it back to you at this point.
Thanks for that initial presentation. I think, obviously, this is I know that it's not a normal year. We continue to say this isn't a normal time. I know some of my colleagues, these mayors, you know, we're trying to get through this, but it's definitely not normal times. It's a, you know, a unique situation in a century. There's been so many things that have happened, but the only thing, and I've said this before, we look back to is obviously 1918, 1919, 100 years ago, so. I appreciate that presentation. I don't know if the superintendent wants to say anything, but I'm going to open the floor up to questions from the committee in terms of the presentation, and where we go from here. Dr. Tutwiler, any comments?
Good to go.
Any, so looking from any members of the committee to address what Dorothy's talking about, thoughts, questions? Member Capola? And then Member Nicholson. Sadowite, if you think, raise your hand as well.
I have been thinking about it, and I was really on the same line that Dorothy was talking about. I mean, the year was chaotic. You know, we had to turn in a lot of different directions, and that includes the superintendent having to, you know, put time into other areas, you know, and whether he's met those goals or, you know, by the standards and indicators, but I think that we should continue with what we had set before, and just continue on the same path. And if that's, you know, what the thought of the superintendent is.
Thank you, Dawn. Member Capola? I mean, Member Nicholson?
Yeah, I agree with Member Capola and the recommendation here. I mean, obviously, I want to I would hope that we can do this in consultation with Dr. Tutwiler and do something that feels fair, especially under circumstances, but anything, this is a multi-party endeavor. But, you know, a couple things. One, I think we have great goals for the district. I think it's helpful, and we were planning on using those goals as themes anyway from year to year, and that will continue. I think both themes will continue to be relevant even under the changed circumstances. So I think that's helpful, and that would allow us to evaluate, you know, work that was done prior to March, and are also still really relevant post-March. And then the indicators are fairly broad, and broad enough, I think, for us to be able to evaluate the work that happened prior to March and the pivot that's happened after the pandemic, so that we can, you know, factor in all the circumstances in thinking through this, so that all makes sense to me.
Thank you, Member Nicholson. Member Sadowite, I think I had your hand up.
Yeah, you know, I'm just going to really echo what my colleagues have said so far, but, you know, if you look at what we picked last time, instruction has changed drastically with the movement on to promote learning. So, you know, there are things that can still fall in line with where we're at. So since March, I feel as though we've met maybe 25 times, so each time we meet, that means that there's a boatload of work that Dr. Tutwiler has to do before we get to that particular meeting. In addition to that, trying to align with the CDC, with DSC, and their ever-changing rules. Then you have the sports and the lack of sports for this particular season. You have the social-emotional issues with the kids. And our educators, you have the negotiations with each and every contract every time something changes. So, you know, it's understandable that, you know, not much has happened on what we planned, because it's like that in every district, unfortunately. But I believe that a lot of the things that we were going to measure, we still can, you know, obviously with the data-informed decisions, it's easy to see who's logging in and who's not logging in, and we have the data with regards to how many students have logged in. And obviously, at that particular point in time, the district has been making a decision as to what to do for those students that aren't. So, you know, I see movement. Is it the movement that we kind of expected? No, because it's different. You know, it's a different type of movement, but it's still going in a positive direction. Obviously, I'm taking a step back and then, obviously, seeing where the district is going to head in the future with what we know today is important, and I think that we have to collaborate on that, especially with remote learning as a whole. You know, it's something that was new for us. We have to get better at it, but it's still something that we should also put in. Obviously, the district's future goals is to better our technology basis, and I think we've already seen a lot of it done with what we've done with the budget and taken money, and realigning it in different areas and hiring more IT people. So you see the progress, you see he's met, you know, a lot of the challenges, but I agree with Ms. Pressler that it's not like we told him ahead of time that we had expectations, so it's hard to measure him at that particular point in time.
Thank you, Member Sadowite. Member Gailey?
When we first went on our journey path, and we had Dr. Tutwiler, and we were looking at where we're going to go from here last spring and coming over to the fall, it was it was remarkable that we were able to get computers for every student, or laptops. It was remarkable to me that we were able to train every teacher and every student to the best of our ability. So it was really difficult to think how we would evaluate all this when it, none of this, it was not in any of our plans. So I was highly impressed with the fact that you could take take the situation, and you'll always make things positive. So like in this evaluation, I think there are things that we can measure and things that we can't measure, and we can't hold it against you, because like, we are not able to measure like, how the students are learning instructionally. We don't know, because we didn't test them in the spring, and we haven't, I don't know how the teachers feel about how they're doing in their classrooms, what they're getting out of it, because ideally, remote learning is not the way we want to go. We want to go person-to-person learning, and that's where we are at best. But as far as the evaluation is concerned, or looking at how to evaluate you, I'm just going to say it again. You moved them on. You moved us into a future where we can use remote learning if we need to. And the teachers, that you got them to do unbelievable work, can't give them enough credit, and that reflects on you, Dr. Tutwiler. This all reflects on you, so. I have a hard time with these evaluations. I always gave my student hundreds if they met the criteria, so that's kind of evaluator I am. So I agree with Dorothy Pressler that it would be very difficult to evaluate you after this year, but I know how hard you worked, and I know where we were and where we are now. Anyway, it's not perfect, but like you said, we're, it's a work in progress.
Thank you, Member Gailey. Member Ford?
Yeah, I just echo what Ms. Gailey said, and I think all of us are on the same page. I think we have to find a way to factor in some sort of a COVID evaluation, because what Dr. Tutwiler has done this year is thinking out of the box, doing things that never happened before, and the accomplishments that he's made and the district has made is a credit to him and his whole staff and the whole district. But I think that has to somehow be factored into our normal evaluation, because he, you know, he did a lot of moves under duress this year.
Thank you. And we'll go, Dorothy, you want to, please?
Yeah, I just, in some of the comments about, you know, folding what has happened with COVID into the evaluation, certainly, there may be parts of the goals, like I just had a chance to quickly review the goals that are set, but some of the goals related to technology, which, you know, there may have been more of an emphasis from March to now on technology than there would have been had COVID not happened. Other committees have used what they could apply from the standards and indicators they picked to think about how to recognize the work that the superintendent was able to do to address the change to remote learning in the spring and the work that's been done, and also used the comments or the narrative part of the evaluation to be able to recognize that work, you know, so that it didn't go entirely unrecognized, because you know, everyone knows that all the educators have been working so hard to make sure that all the students are cared for, and and that the focus and change quite drastically in the middle of March. So they've used the comment part of the evaluation and then looked at the standards or the parts of the goals that they could to recognize that work in the evaluation process.
I have a question for.
Yes, Member Sadowite.
Thank you. So, just a question, so, you know, for instruction, when it comes to COVID time, obviously with remote learning, it's been done remotely. Obviously, one of the things that we look for when we're seeing if there's been good instruction to our students is to see if the teachers had all the resources and tools in order to give the instruction that we, you know, we expect of them. Is that something that we're still going to be able to do? You know, half the time they're working at home, and there's two days that they're coming into school. Are we going to look at this to see if the, if health and wellness, according to the CDC, was followed and stuff like that, or is that looking too far into it?
I might defer to Dr. Tutwiler to answer that question.
I mean, I welcome the committee to choose whatever they think is important to look at. I mean, I, you know, the things that you're describing, I think Attorney Sadowite would fall into the fourth standard. I mean, I'm sure that aligns with one of the indicators there around, you know, the professional culture, you know, do folks have tools to do the work well, things of that nature. It's just a function of me providing you with the evidence to support you know, proficiency in that realm or better. And obviously, you'd be able to provide us with, you know, the information with regards to the testing, you know, to make sure that the buildings were healthy, you know, what transpired, stuff like that, like so we get a full picture when we're evaluating you. Okay, good, good. Just want to make sure that, you know, obviously, everything was done. Some of the things weren't done you know, to everyone's liking, so, you know, obviously, having some just backup for that would be great, because you know, it's important that, you know, we're evaluating you not just for the students, but also for the educators that are in the district, so.
Dr. Tutwiler?
Uh, just two things. I'm with you 100%, Attorney Sadowite, and what I would say is, I think the evaluation is most beneficial for me. You know, whatever I provide you is going to be a reflection of what happened or what didn't happen, what folks had or what they didn't have. And then it's up to you to make a determination as to, you know, you know, essentially render a judgment on that work, and give it back to me, and I take that as feedback that I'll bring to bear on the work going forward. The other thing, just a point of clarification, so we've got the 1920 school year. We had a set of goals. We are a quarter of the way through the 2021 school year. I just want to be clear, Ms. Pressler, are you recommending that the committee consider, you know, an evaluation for the 1920 school year with some flexibility around the goals with the current school year, the 2021, the goals which look very similar to the previous year, and future indicators to be determined?
Yes, I would say, so I would say for the current school year, since you haven't set the goals yet and you're already partway through the year, that, you know, the goals, in fairness to the superintendent, to give the superintendent a year to accomplish those goals, that they may, you may look at the action items a little bit, but I would say you definitely want to look at basically carrying the same goals forward without a whole lot of change. Again, goals very often don't change very much from year to year. It's more, you know, what are the next steps that we need to work on to accomplish the goals? I would say, though, for a couple, I know you're getting ready to do the evaluation, and I would say, once that evaluation is done, right away, make sure that you set the goals that will be this year, hopefully very much like they already are in place, and if you're going to change any standards, do it now, so that, again, the superintendent has the entire year. Again, thinking about the fact that this is a goal-driven instrument, and the standards and indicators really support that, so that it's fair to do that at once, make sure that they're tied together, and if they're tied together well, then you really only need the superintendent to have one set of evidence that will support both the goals and the standards, and not two sets of evidence. The other thing you might want to look at is, I believe that the standards and indicators like you're looking at now, you may have gone down to the element level. There is a new rubric out there that does not go down to the element level. It stays at the indicator level, and most school committees are adopting that simpler rubric for a number of reasons. It's easier for everyone to understand. It doesn't get the school committee down into the weeds potentially that the element level did. It's easier for the public to understand the process, and it's easier when you're all coming together as a group of people who are in essence going to end up with one evaluation. It just keeps things simpler. And then another step going forward is, I would say that if, when you get to the 2122 school year, that really you should be looking at what are the goals during the summer of 2021, so that the superintendent has a full year to know what the goals and standards and indicators that he's going to be evaluated on are.
Yeah, I have a question related to that. So we're looking at, I think we've talked about, we're looking at 1920, which is really what we're working on now, and then setting whatever either adjustment or goals are related to 2021 would be after we finish the evaluation in January, so we do the evaluation based on 1920, based on pretty much what we did for, we had established before, and I think I think it's important to note that close to seven months of 1920 were pre-COVID. So we're looking at almost like a bridge between the two, so, obviously. So that's what you're talking about, Dorothy. It's, we're taking what we had, which makes, I think everyone seems to agree on, that we take what we had for, established for this 1920, and then once we get this evaluation completed in the timeframe, which is what we're trying to establish tonight, and then start to go through the evaluation, would be setting whatever changes we think we should make in 2021, and then talking about what we want to do for 2022, particularly because of next summer. Is that what I'm hearing?
So, yes, so, once you finish the evaluation of 1920, then look right away at 2021 with the idea that things aren't going to change that much, because, in part, because you're already through the year, partway through the year, and then once you're, when you get to the summer of 21, then be looking at 2122, so that the superintendent has a full year to know what goals he's being evaluated on. And goals and standards and indicators.
Thank you. Member Nicholson?
Thank you. That's really helpful. I was wondering what, if people had thoughts on the basically, the plan for 2020, 2021, this current school year? If we're going to be using the same goals and standards for 1920 as we are for 2021, if there's any advantage to combining those evaluations this spring to cover that whole period, and then we'll be caught up heading into the summer for 2021, 22, given the sort of administrative work and in terms of going through the process and also asking the superintendent to prepare the evidence with, you know, with everything going on, would allow us to capture the work that's been going on for 1920, and also the pivot that happened that really took from March all the way to October, right, for the model to really be set up? Or whether people wanted to separate those, which then puts the March through June, the March through June remote period, and attaches it to 1920 anyway, so you have that transition there. I just wanted to see what people have got about that.
Can I respond, Mr. Mayor?
You want to respond to that? You can respond to that, Number Sadowite, and I don't know if Dorothy wants to respond as well, but go ahead. And then we'll go to Member Capola or Member Gailey, but I'll also see if Dorothy wants, Dorothy Pressler wants to speak up as well. Go ahead.
Attorney Nicholson, you took the word that I'm off, because I'm thinking, what is, what are we really doing in January? You know, we're going to be taking these resources, you know, away from preparing for
you know, away from preparing for the immunization or, you know, the vaccine. There's still gonna be issues with making sure our kids have the flu shots, like all this o- other things. So, the superintendent's gonna have to do a substantial amount of work to get the backups and all that stuff. But if we combine the two, it it's it's gonna allow for for time, which is, I think, what we need. And I I I agree that we should consider at least merging the two and 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 allowing for some more time to 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 take place. Obviously, from our words today, I I believe Patrick, Dr. Tutwiler understands that we're pleased with with his work. It's not gonna be, obviously, documented in a in a in a review, but at some point it will be. So, I think that we should, if it's allowed by law, push it off and merge it with, due to the, obviously, the COVID situation. I agree with you, Jared, on that.
Dorothy, you wanna speak to that? And then we'll go to Member Capola or Member Gately.
So, I'm just thinking about a couple of things here. One is what the contract, the superintendent's contract might say, that you might wanna check on if there's anything in the contract about evaluation. Sometimes there is, sometimes there's not. So, you wanna make sure that you're doing whatever is outlined in the contract. Technically, for a superintendent that has isn't, has not been in the position for three years yet, there should be an annual evaluation. I have to say, no one looks too closely for that. But, and I also think it would be fair to ask Dr. Tutwiler if he wanted to opine on that, too.
Can we also have Attorney Mahos chime in as well?
When we go to Dr. Tutwiler, I was gonna say, I was gonna do the same thing, ask Attorney Mahos to speak up as well. Dr. Tutwiler?
Attorney Mahos going first.
John, you wanna speak to that, based, I think the question's related to the contract and evaluations and what that means? In terms of getting a yearly evaluation instead of merging two years together on an evaluation? You wanna speak to that?
No, I'll speak to it. I mean, contracting parties are right here, the school committee and the superintendent. If you wanna modify the terms of the contract, even if there is language in there relative to evaluation, parties can do that as long as it's a meeting of the mind. So, I mean, I think that's a decision for the school committee to make. The other superintendent just decide whether in fact they wanna modify terms of the contract or to the evaluation and put it off the way the time is being stated by the members this evening.
So, I just know make, and I like to make a point on that. So, if we're talking about, what we're talking about here, if we're we're thinking of doing this, and Dr. Tutwiler definitely want your input on this, and as this discussion continues. So, we're considering taking what we all agree is is what we had used for the last evaluation to carry it through for this evaluation. And my understanding is that, Member Nicholson and Satterwhite are talking about also using those same criteria that we established previously to, for a joint or a combined twenty nineteen twenty 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 one. I I I wanna make sure I'm saying that correctly from both members and using the same information. And I know, Member Capola or Member Gately wanted to weigh in. I don't know, Dr. Tutwiler, you wanna weigh in, or you wanna let the members weigh in?
Ju- just quickly, I just wanna make sure that I understand what's being proposed. So, you know, and Dorothy can keep me honest here, I think it's an annual evaluation for superintendents. You know, last year was, you know, challenging. We all would agree to that. So, the the idea is to later this year, maybe late spring, combine an evaluation from, for the nineteen twenty year plus the twenty twenty one year, and then pivot to developing goals to allow for a full year for the twenty one twenty two. Is that all right? Is that what you were proposing?
Member Nicholson?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that that's roughly, that's where I was proposing. I mean, you could also do it, if 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 people felt an urgency to do it, you could do it, you could do it sooner rather than later, but then it would cover nineteen twenty and up to, you know, December or up to January. And then, the next one would 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 cover twenty twenty one and and the and the tail end of this year. Is so, so some flexibility as to when this coming review happens, if there's an urgency around it. But then, but yeah, that 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 kind of combination.
Member Capola?
I I don't agree with my colleagues. I feel as though Dr. Tutwiler is entitled to an evaluation. I mean, you know, we're, we've, we've kind of indicated tonight, a number of people on the committee, that we are satisfied with what he's done. But he's entitled. He even said himself, Dr. Tutwiler, that this is most beneficial to him to have this evaluation. And I think this is something that we should be doing. I know it's a difficult year. You know, we're talking about rolling the goals over. So, it's it's not like we're gonna have a lot of meetings to to have for goals that will get us through just until June thirtieth. And then, you know, from there, the following year. But I think he's entitled to have the evaluation. There may be something in his contract that indicates, you know, you know, an increase in pay because of an evaluation. I don't know, because I can't remember what was in there. It's not. But I still think you're entitled to have an evaluation. I think it's the fair thing to do. And I think we should do it, you know, because we didn't do it, doesn't, shouldn't excuse us, and we wanna roll it in there. It's a bad precedent to send. And I'd like to give him an evaluation. And I think that we can all do it the first meeting in January. And if there's no changes in the goals, you approve the goals. Simple as that.
Thank you, Member Capola. Member Gately?
I also agree with Donna, I mean, Mrs. Capola. And the reason why I agree with Mrs. Capola is when we look at what Dr. Tutwiler has done in nineteen, two thousand nine, two thousand and nineteen to twenty, we got COVID, and he had to transition to remote learning. And he worked, and his whole staff worked and made those changes. Hand packets were sent out. And then, over the summer from two thousand and twenty, over to the fall of two thousand and twenty, he changed to remote learning for every single student and household in Lynn. So, I would like to give him that evaluation. I would like to say, kudos to you for being able to do this. And that's an evaluation that needs to follow what we changed. And I think that's really important for him to hear. Like, we're hearing from parents and staff how difficult it is, and he's moving it forward, and he needs to hear that feedback. So then, in the future, he can roll it out a little differently, correct what's wrong, and move forward. And that's a whole idea of a, an evaluation. He is doing excellent. I think we need he deserves to have this evaluation for both these years. It would be faster for us to roll it in, but I don't think it would be very fair to Dr. Tutwiler, after all the work that he put in, all those meetings, all summer long, all of it. He worked so hard. He deserves to hear some feedback on his work and an evaluation. That's how I feel about it.
I think the, I think the contract, if I'm correct, and we can ask John, is it it an annual evaluation is definitely part of the contract. Member Nicholson?
Yeah, no, I I totally agree. But that's just the thing. If we did an evaluation for nineteen twenty, we wouldn't be evaluating the work he did over the summer. And we wouldn't be evaluating the work that he did this fall. We would, because it would be, the evaluation would only go to two thousand twenty.
But I think the other piece, I think I think it's a great point, Member Nicholson. But I think then, the next question is, and then we'd be going into the evaluation to establish, probably continue what we're doing this year, and then be able to give a fuller evaluation of the full year related to it. And we can include, I think, what happened over the summer as part of that evaluation. If we're looking at nineteen twenty, similar to what we're talking about for going into twenty one twenty two, so. You know, I understand the point. Just, Member Satterwhite?
And I I just wanna have for the record that we're not discounting the work that Dr. Tutwiler did, and it it doesn't go away. So, it's still gonna be in an evaluation. You know, I can tell you from from just experience and and working with Dr. Tutwiler as superintendent, that you can see through the work that has been done for the district, not only that, even through job postings for these vital positions that we're filling, that he's listening to the community, he's listening to to the to this committee. You know, we we have, just in the past two months, these great, very important positions that are are now changed and transformed to what the district is gonna look like. So, there's obvious evidence there that Dr. Tutwiler has took this ship and 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 changed course, which is, which is what we wanted. That's why we we hired him. You know, the the district has documented evidence of the work. But what I'm trying to say, and I believe my brother Jared is trying to say, Attorney Nicholson, is it doesn't go away. Just because we're doing it two months down the line, instead of January, in March, it doesn't change anything. He gets more feedback, more current feedback, than doing it the way that we're, that is being suggested, which would just be nineteen through twenty. If we look at March, do you do you not recall what took place from March to to the end of the school year? The students had, they didn't all have laptops at that particular time. There was, and and the work was not necessarily graded, if I recall. Dr. Tutwiler, can you keep me honest? True, okay. So, really, do you really wanna talk about from March to 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 June and say that magical things took place? No, we were all new at this. Every single district in the state, we were all new. The D C gave guidance at that particular point in time, but then things got real. And then we were able to 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 see what took place thereafter. And we we have the data now to put that into the same review. So, it's it's more efficient. It's not, it's not a bad thing for Dr. Tutwiler, for us to now include these other things. But to 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 sit here and say, oh, what about the stuff he did during the fall? Well, come, come on board with Jared and I, and you'll see that we can then talk about the stuff that took place in the fall. Or what whatever period of year was discussed. But it doesn't discount the work that Dr. Tutwiler did. It it doesn't discount the feedback that we received from both educators and students over this period of time. It doesn't discount what we witnessed. Okay, as school committee members during this period of time. I think that it's 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 better to give him more current information than just to focus on nineteen twenty, which is very different than where we are today.
Member Gately, then I'd like to see if Dorothy would have some thoughts on the discussion. Oh, you're muted, Lorraine.
Actually, I'd like to talk to Dorothy. Dorothy, we're evaluating nineteen twenty, right? The school year nineteen twenty.
Dr. Tutwiler, that's my understanding, that this is what the evaluation will cover?
And right now, we're in school year twenty twenty one. So, that's what we are gonna be doing for our future twenty twenty one. We'll have to have that evaluation done. And then we'll go forward, and we will do school year twenty one twenty two in the fall. Is that correct? Am I incorrect on those?
Well, you would do, you would set goals for twenty one twenty two somewhere around the fall of twenty twenty one, so almost a year from now.
Yep.
And then evaluate twenty one twenty two whenever you get to the end of that cycle.
Okay, so, we are evaluating nineteen twenty, and we're writing goals for twenty twenty one.
Correct.
Correct. And and twenty twenty one is when we went remote, fully remote. Right, Dr. Tutwiler? But in nineteen twenty is when we went from from
From a year that started out as a normal year and ended up very different?
Yes. And and we had to make a transition over the summer to bring us to twenty twenty one, the evaluation.
Yeah, I think one of the things that the committee, if you if you just, is, one of the things the committee needs to consider is, where does the summer of twenty fall? Or if you're evaluating nineteen twenty, are you evaluating up until the start of the school year twenty twenty one? Or are you evaluating up until June of twenty? So, you don't lose the work that was done over the summer if you're gonna if you're gonna split it into two evaluations. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it was under my, my understanding that twenty twenty one is the school year, so it would be from July on, that's the school year that goes into twenty twenty one. Everything that was done after that, because the new budget comes out, we get the budget, it's a new budget, and we move forward. I'm not sure if I'm correct on this, if any of my committee members can.
I don't think we've we've had the budget yet for for this school year, and we're we're in the middle of it. That's why, I believe, Jared and I are saying, why not include it in this, in this review? And instead of doing it in January, do it a couple of months after. Include it. That's that's what I'm.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I I I honestly think that we're we're all on the same page here, and that we we really wanna do the evaluation, give credit for the work. I think we're just trying to figure out the right steps, because, you know, there's a handful of steps. I mean, when, one way to do it, if we wanna get the feedback sooner rather than later, is to is to do an evaluation process, but agree that we will look, that we will include, not, we we won't end the evaluation at last June or July. Because because otherwise, we miss the the great work that happened in August and September. And even it's October, when when all the devices were finally out there, you know, the 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 town halls had continued. And, you know, do it that way. So, do so do an evaluation soon, but but make sure we include the the summer into the the beginning of this year.
Even the professional development, Jared, too, that took place.
We'll go to Member Capola?
We're going from July first to June thirtieth. So, I know you say March, Michael, but March would be like when we're setting the, working on setting the goals for the following year. That, you know, the twenty one twenty two. But the evaluation should go from July first all the way to June thirtieth. So, at the end of next year in June, we would be given a second evaluation. So, you're talking about combining two evaluations, so we'll take take in two whole school years. I know you're shaking your head no, but where, how how are you not? Because evaluations go the school year from July thirty first to June thirtieth.
Go ahead, Member Nicholson.
Yeah, I mean, people can clarify for this, but but my understanding is that we have some flexibility at this point, because of where we are in the year. So, we could decide that we're gonna evaluate from July first twenty nineteen until October first twenty twenty, and that would be the evaluation.
Or the second quarter of, you know, the school year or something like that.
Right, yeah, we that we could, just by 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 vote and by agreement with Dr. Tutwiler, we could, we could set the period ourself. Because if it's June thirtieth of twenty twenty, then we don't capture the work for August and September in this evaluation. But, you know, honestly, I I I I agree that this is ultimately a tool for Dr. Tutwiler. If he has, if if he has a preference on the timeframe, then I'm I'm very open to that.
Member Gately?
Mr. Mayor, can you tell me our fiscal school year? Doesn't it start July first? It goes through the summer, and it ends June thirtieth. Cut the summer out, just because it's not, like, we're not in work, in in the buildings teaching. It's a fiscal school year. So, the nineteen twenty, it started in July first two thousand and nineteen, and it ended in June thirtieth, two twenty. It started July first in two twenty, and it went to, it's going to June thirtieth in two twenty one. Isn't that our fiscal school years?
That's our fiscal years. That's correct.
So, I don't understand why we're cutting any of the hard work out. I'm just saying, let's give him his two thousand and nineteen twenty evaluation, set up the standards, and give him his twenty twenty one. Deserved. And set up new standards for twenty one twenty two. He did a, he did yeoman's work in nineteen twenty, and, yeah, nineteen twenty, and yeoman's work in twenty twenty one. And we're not evaluating that. We're not evaluating the fact that he has goals, that he wants to lower the We're not evaluating the fact that he has goals, that he wants to lower the uh disciplinary, no, these. Um, suspension rates, or lowering the school year by no snow days. He has goals that he put out there last year, that he has met, that he deserves to be evaluated. That's my point, so I just wanna make clear that that is the fiscal school year, it's July first. To June thirtieth, that is the fiscal school year, it includes the summer, 'cause yeoman's work is done in the summer by curriculum.
Remember Sadoway? You all said, I'm sorry, Member Gately, I'm sorry, we finished? Okay, remember Sadoway?
Uh, the superintendent works all year, whether there's a fiscal school year or not, so he should be measured for every. Period of time that he's on the clock, so yes, twelve months each year, if you wanna call it a fiscal year, whatever. We're not telling you guys that we don't wanna me- measure or do any of that stuff, it's it's gonna be a part of it. But it it's not gonna matter if Dr. Tutwiler doesn't agree, so let's see what he says. Before we continue to go around a bush over and over again, because we're saying the same thing, just differently.
Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, you wanna weigh in on this, I think you understand where the discussion's going, so. Um, I think I think everybody would like to see your preference and and follow what you think would be appropriate. Uh, recognizing, I think everyone feels you've done a uh pretty outstanding job under the circumstances, including me.
And he's sitting there saying, keep on saying good things about me.
And I appreciate it, but uh, I it it's not done by me alone, we have an incredible. Professional family who who does incredible things for students and families, and that's why we are where we are. Uh, I I really think that we need to close the books on last year, uh, the nineteen twenty school year. There were a set of goals for last year, uh, that, you know, I'll be honest with you, just looking at them, the student achievement goal. Um, you know, two of the three um indicators in that student learning goal are were significantly disrupted. You have no data for, uh, three of the four uh district uh improvement goals. Were significantly disruptive, I I don't, I don't have much to show for those. What I would recommend that you consider, um, is simply evaluating me on the rubric. Just using the rubric, because many of those goals will fold, we're still, that work continues. Uh, just on the rubric, uh, last year, last summer, and stop it right there. Nineteen twenty plus the summer, and stop it right there, I appreciate that um. Folks wanna recognize uh the launch of the school year, all the work that staff did. Um, getting the 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 school year uh on point, that can be recognized in the in the next evaluation. My recommendation would be to close out last year, do so in January, uh, and then we can, you know, immediately, I think, is. Ms. Presser was recommending pivot to establishing a set of goals, I think that can be done in one meeting easily, we don't. Even need to retreat like we've normally done, uh, I think that can be done in one meeting, and then. You can set your sights on a timeline for another evaluation at the end of the school year, that'd be my recommendation.
I think the one positive piece here is we're really taking what we used in the past and just taking it, using it, and for. A nineteen twenty, what we would have been doing in a normal year, we would have been maybe reevaluating it a little bit, is that correct, Dorothy, and and maybe making up. Some tweaks or changes, but I think we've all agreed that's not gonna happen, um, so um. I think Dr. Tutwiler, you laid that out, um, if that's the case, uh. And we wanna go on that, I know Dorothy, I don't know if you speak to any comments related to that, but if that's the case, seems to me that. Uh, the next step may be to address, uh, that we accept the the evaluations that were presented for the last year. And then and set some time to get together, uh, to then do that evaluation, uh, Dorothy, you wanna speak to that, if that's the process?
That sounds like a fine process to me.
Dr. Tutwiler?
Uh, if if you wanna proceed that way, I can have um artifacts for the committee to consider. Uh, honor before the twenty third of December, and then you can pick a meeting in December, excuse me, in January. Um, to, you know, do the formal public evaluation.
Member Capola?
Does that require a motion, mayor, 'cause I'll put it in the form of a motion that we um. On the first meeting in January, meeting of the hall, that um, everybody present their evaluation. Of the superintendent for the year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
And I think it also may require a motion to accept the the um. Evaluations as as were uh done in the past, past year, I think that would also be part of this, 'cause I think we're accepting that. Um, without change, which I think we've all agreed, I think for sure, that that was something that we felt was appropriate. So I think that needs to be included in the motion as well, Member Capola.
Are you talking about the goals for the following year?
No, for the the goals that we're gonna utilize for nineteen twenty. Right, like for that, for what we're gonna do for January, I think we have to just accept that those are, that's the criteria, or those are the. Uh, I think the standards and um, I don't know if I'm properly, Dorothy, would you wanna help me out here a little bit to make sure I'm uh?
Yeah, so I I think. I I definitely use the same standards and indicators, I'm a little bit, um. Dr. Tutwiler, are you suggesting not looking at the goals at all and just using the standards and indicators?
I I mean, if 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 the committee wants, uh, you know, progress on those goals, I can offer that. But I can tell you right now, if you look at, for example, the student achievement goals, uh, that included, uh, the extent to which we met. Um, uh, the state standard on attendance, we don't have that, that we don't have that data. It also includes NCAS data, we don't have that data, it it's gonna be a very wonky picture, um, I'm happy to do it. It's just gonna, you know, be wonky.
I, yeah, I just wanted to clarify so that the motion was correct, um, when it was made, that it's just looking at the at the standards and indicators. Um, do you wanna look at the goals to the extent that you were able to work? I mean, I think there's some, you just don't want them at all.
No, I I I don't mind, uh, I just, I I I'm thinking about, um, you know. The the picture's gonna be halfway done, uh, I I I just don't know that that is, you know. A valuable use of the committee's time, if they want that, I'm happy to provide it.
Yeah, well, and they and they, um, the committee could, again, if they're looking at, uh, you know, progress on the goals stopped in March. There's no question about it, and some of the evidence isn't there that you were planning to, but if there was work on the goals that you did before March. Then they could recognize that in 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 the the comments that they make.
True.
Yeah.
Okay.
Member Nicholson?
Just wanna clarify that on the timeline, it's the nineteen twenty school year plus summer twenty twenty.
That's what I was recommending.
Okay, yeah, that sounds correct.
So you wanna wanna make a motion, uh, and I, that's why I asked Dorothy, I wanna make sure the motion is appropriate to to get what we're talking about here. I think Donna had, would you like to make the motion again, Member Capola, or uh? I can, I think it's.
Okay, if it if. To um, set a date for the first meeting, first meeting of the hall in January, to evaluate the superintendent. On the twenty nineteen through the summer of twenty twenty. Um, using the standards and indicators that were set.
Second.
Well, is there a discussion, there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Jared second, Dorothy.
Jared second, thank you, thank you, uh, there's a second, that requires a roll call.
Nan, you're on uh mute.
Okay, now?
Yep.
Okay, it's Cassiana Saxon, Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Sadoway?
Yes.
Yes, and Nan McGee?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's uh, that's the first um part of the agenda, thank you all, it was a great discussion. Um, and uh, what we have, we have one more uh piece of uh, one more uh item on the agenda. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, would you uh like to speak to that?
Yeah, I would, um, you know, in the beginning of the meeting, or just before the meeting, I think we were totally. Uh, all sort of chiming in on the context in which we find ourselves, as it relates to. Uh, the surge in positive cases, uh, not just in our community, not just in the city of Lynn, but also in the state. Uh, and and nationally, uh, but as it relates to Lynn, uh, you know, we are. Uh, you know, on the second day of breaking a record, and it's not a good record. Uh, you know, a hundred and it's actually a hundred and ninety one positive cases, uh, in the last twenty four hours. Um, with, you know, deep concerns about the days ahead. Uh, I think all of us would agree that this was, um, you know, the medical community had been predicting this. Uh, that when the holidays come, we're gonna see uh some not good things happen, uh, and we are there. Uh, we are full remote, uh, as a district, as it relates to student learning. Uh, we have uh suspended uh our in-person special education evaluation. We've suspended our in-person uh language testing when a new student registered. Uh, we have suspended our learning support centers, the after-school program. Uh, for high-needs special education students, uh, all because of concerns uh about safety. Uh, and given where we are right now, I I think we need to go another step, uh, as it relates to our staff. Um, and and here's what I'm recommending, uh, I'm recommending that we uh move to. Uh, beginning Monday, move to uh full remote work, uh, for all staff on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, I'm recommending that on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, uh, all staff have the option of working remotely. Uh, with the exception of uh our technology department, our IT, clerks and confidential secretaries. Parent liaison, nurses, building principals, uh, and senior leadership. Um, everyone else, again, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday would have the option of working remotely. Uh, I would say also that our food service staff would maintain, uh, their existing schedule, so that we're able to provide. Uh, meals uh seamlessly to to families as we have, uh, you know, since the beginning of the school year. Uh, really, the idea here is to decrease the number of staff coming into buildings. Um, give uh the vast majority of our staff the option of working remotely Monday through Friday. Uh, give, um, uh, and then give, you know, what's really important to us, make sure that families. Are still serviced well by having certain personnel uh available on site, uh, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Um, is, you know, I think a call just went out, and I just got a text message, uh, from the city of Lynn. Uh, City Hall and certain other departments have gone to, um, a reduced uh staff schedule on site. Uh, I think the school department needs to follow suit, given where we are right now.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, and yes, um, as of Monday, we'll be going to an AB week. Um, all administrative staff in in the buildings, except for assembly department heads and others. Relates to essential in the building will be coming in, uh, on a staggered one week on, one week off. Uh, appointment only for um business that has to be in person, most of it we're hoping to do remote. And I know that the Lynn Housing Authority and the Lynn Water Institute are also taking steps to um. Reduce uh staff and um public access, if they haven't already done the public access piece. Uh, um, one ninety one, um, is um. Much more than we anticipated earlier in the year, that's a lot of, lot of cases, and we're really dealing with the, uh, if you're listening to the. CDC and uh, I was on a call yesterday with Dr. Fauci, Dr. Burks, and Dr. Redfield. Uh, ba- basically articulating the next several months, uh, December, January, and February are gonna be. Uh, as they're describing, could be pretty dark months related to what we're doing, so, uh, see Deputy Superintendent Rigerio would like to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, there was a comment in that was typed in from Sheila O'Neil that. Pat, you were you were breaking up due to some feedback uh from someone else, and they didn't catch what, everything that you said. So I don't know if you wanna just run through really quickly what, um, you know, what the parameters are of who's reporting when and for how long?
Yeah, uh, so again, what I'm proposing, uh, beginning Monday, December twenty se- uh, December seventh. Until uh Thursday, December twenty third, uh, that we pivot to a model that reduces the number. Of staff on site, uh, all staff Tuesdays and Thursdays would work remotely. Uh, clerks, teachers, guidance counselors, all staff, um, uh, Tuesday and Thursday. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, um, staff would work, have the opportunity to work remotely if they so choose. Uh, and then I would require a small group, uh, of professionals to report in person, that group being. Um, there are technology department or IT, clerks and confidential secretaries, parent liaisons. Nurses, our building principals, uh, and all senior leadership.
I think there's a requi- member Sadoway, please, member Sadoway?
Well, I I just wanted to also share that, um, ma- many uh uh courts are also doing the same thing with their clerk's office. So it's it's not just a city thing, it it's, it seems like it's a. Uh, a more frequent uh uh thing that's happening in the state due to uh what's going on with um, with the numbers. Um, so, um, the courts are still functioning, work's still being done, so so it's 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 not a. Uh, it's not necessarily a bad thing, um, but i- it is something that's that's happening in other um industries in this in the state, just so you know.
Thank you, I think the the committee needs to take a position to support this. Um, so I would ask for a motion to support Dr. Tutwiler's um proposal.
Um, uh, so moved, um, with 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 regards to what the Dr. Tutwiler said. Uh, the two days, um, Tuesdays and.
Full remote.
And Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, starting December seventh until December twenty third, uh, the.
Select personnel, how about?
Select personnel, uh, as stated by Dr. Tutwiler.
Second. Second.
The second requires a roll call.
Mr. Cassiana's absent, Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Sadoway?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, yes, Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, I I.
Dr. Tutwiler before.
Cause there's a, there's a lot of, uh, I see a lot of our uh professional family on the call, and and folks are watching, families may be watching. And wondering what this means, um, you know, the order of operations is to share this. Uh, with the school committee, uh, in in public forum, uh, and we've got communication uh set to go out tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, and that was, it had to be brought up at the school committee, so that, um, you could also move forward on this, so. Just so people understand that are on the call, uh, and listening, so, um, with that, there is a motion on the table for, to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, requires a roll call.
It's Cassiana's absent, Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadoway?
Yes.
Nan McGee?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Bye.
For the rest of the night, and uh, we'll talk soon.
Wear a mask.
Stay safe and ha- stay healthy and wear your mask, social distance.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.